Good evening, everybody. This is the March 21st, 2017 meeting of the Winterford Town Council.
I'm Nancy Cala. Nancy Boncori.
Here.
Nancy Lucieri.
Here.
Nancy Boyajin.
Here.
Nancy Barone.
Present.
Nancy Dibetto.
Yep.
And President Sanford. President Bisco.
Here.
Thank you.
Next item, the minutes, we've all received the minutes from the March 7th Town Council meeting.
March 7th.
Second?
I noticed one thing I wanted to bring up. The motion about complete streets said that the complete streets policy was approved, but I think it was just referred to the DPW subcommittee.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Yes.
So, move? Second? Any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any comments? Correspondents? Do you have any correspondence to report? Any councils? Or none? I just get the public comment. So, with none correspondence, let's go back to public comments. Is there any public comments? Mr. Fabiano.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Two minutes. So, tonight I just wanted to talk a little bit about the upcoming budget and specifically the school budget. As us parents, we should be able to allocate the full amount that's requested by the school committee. We know that's not an easy number to get to, but we're hoping we're able to find ways. And we really feel it's an important time for us to fill that, allocate that whole amount. The last 10 years, we've come a long way financially. Citizens improved. Dead exclusions, tuna overrides, council, town manager, county CFO have all done a great job taking that money, putting it where it needs to be. So, financially, we're in a good position. Everyone's done what they had to do from 2008 to today. There's no doubt about that. The next step in that process is the master plan for the center, for the commercial property, all that information. I think part of the master plan is increasing the population. How do we increase the population? We want to make sure that we're attracting good families when we increase that population. How does the community, to help them, is doing things like this to make the community better. But when people go around looking for real estate, one thing that they look at is education, a big part that nobody knows. They go on the Department of Education website, they look up all these different numbers. One of the biggest numbers, most common things that they pull up is per pupil expenditure. And that's where we have a big problem. The state average is 14,936 dollars. That's the average, not the high of the average. You spend 12,504 dollars, over 15 percent less than the state average. That's hard to overcome when you're trying to attract good families, when they see numbers like that. Not only will they not move in, but a lot of good families will move up if we continue with that pace. If we're not able to find a way to bring that number up and increase what we're giving our students, they deserve it, there's no doubt about it. We have to find a way. For me personally, I look at all these numbers and I look at free cash or surplus at the end of the year. The last four years, 1.5 million, 2 million, 2.2 million, 2.8 million. I'm going to go on a limb and say that she's going to be 2.8 million again, or somewhere in that range. We're not going to be far off. So, we've consistently had that free cash left over. I'm not looking to grab the free cash. What I'm looking for is for us to increase the educational budget with the expectation is we're going to have less free cash at the end of next year. I know ideally we want to have as much free cash as possible. That helps our credit rating, does good things like that. But we're a different community. We don't have all the revenue in the world. As has been said before, we don't have an expense problem, we have a revenue problem. So, we have to find out a way to spend our money the right way. By just putting it away, put it in savings, put it in free cash to get up our credit rating, that's holding down our educational budget. I don't want to have a great credit rating in a not-so-good educational system. I'd rather have a good credit rating and a good educational system. So, in my opinion, we need to look at that budget line by line, be a little less conservative on revenue expectation and expenses, and try to find that difference somewhere in that budget and just have the expectation of the end of the year, next year, we're going to have less free cash. So, that's my hopes and our expectations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Can I just, just for clarification, can I just ask him one question on one of his points?
Sure.
Just for clarification, at the very beginning, you said, you know, your goal is to fund the budget presented. Can you just be more specific as to what your goal is?
My goal is...
Because it's A, B, C, D, E, F. They presented E.
Right. So, my goal, my goal is whatever the school committee decides they want to recommend.
Okay. I just want to be specific.
That's my goal.
And that would come up later.
Because who am I to take their numbers? I mean, my goal would be 2 million dollars, but we know that's not going to be, you know, it's not going to happen.
No, I just wanted...
So, the school committee is going to try to come up with their number, what they feel, working with the town, what is a number that they can get to. So, whatever they feel is accepted is their recommendation is something I'll accept.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
We should, we accept my...
Good. Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Hi. Julia Waller, Chair of Transportation Committee. I've been out of the country for the last month, so just catching up and actually just got back the other night and just wanted to say I hope you all got my letter today that our committee put forward about the complete streets policy. It was so thrilled to hear that that's moving forward and just wanted to echo, you know, all the comments I have in there about that being really an opportunity to transform our state of mind about our streets and not be putting extra red tape or making a big, you know, pain in the butt to change things, but actually just to think of streets as different conduits for democracy and public participation and fun and to be the kind of community that people want to move to. So, I really urge you all to think of it holistically that way and to think of our committee as here to help and provide input. And I don't know the logistics about boards or committees, but we stand ready to help and I really hope that you all approve the policy. And if you have any questions about our letter, please contact me.
Good. Thanks.
Thank you, Julia.
Any other questions, comments? Committee reports. The DPW committee met last evening. Counselor Vorm?
Sure. We met last evening in this room about 7:30, 7 o'clock, excuse me, 7:05 to be exact. On the agenda was the complete streets policy. Present were myself, Councilor Boyajin from the manager's office, Joe Donlowitz, and also Bill Scully of Green International Affiliates. Steve Hines from the Transportation Committee was also present. So, Mr. Scully put on a very nice presentation of essentially what complete streets are and the whole process involved. And just to make really quick conversation about it, in other words, complete streets are for everyone, no matter who they are, how they travel. So, some of the elements of it would be traffic calming, safe routes to schools, neighborhood traffic management, safety initiatives, contact sensitive designs and the such. There was a motion coming out of committee, which I will read in new business, to accept the policy. The meeting ended at 8:10 PM.
Good. Thank you very much. Town Manager McKenna?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you. You know, it's so gratifying to see our teamwork on our public safety departments come together to address two serious conflagrations that occurred, one today and another a few days ago. And I'd asked Chief Flanagan to make a report to the council tonight. And before he does so, I want to say what a credit he is to his organization and, you know, the leadership that he's shown in dealing with both of these serious events is really gratifying for me as a manager to know that we're in good hands, particularly in the leadership of the department. Chief?
So, basically, our two events that we had these past several days, on Saturday night at 1:37 AM, Bill and Adrian Scanlon had just closed up the Winterford Yard Club from a successful St. Patrick's Day party returning home to Lynn. They came by 162 Winterford Shore Drive. There was smoke coming from the second floor. They stopped their car, they got involved, they banged on the door, they awoke the son. The son was unable to go upstairs due to the volume of fire in the second floor. When my crew showed up, they were informed that this gentleman's father was on the second floor. They made quick work of stretching hose lines and search and rescue. They brought him out. He was transported quickly to Mass General where he was pronounced dead. The sad story in this whole thing is that one smoke detector could have prevented this from happening. There was no working smoke detectors. The second floor of this house is all bedrooms. That's where the gentleman was. The state fire marshal's office come in that day. That evening, actually, they spent five hours there. We narrowed it down to one spot, two possible causes. They haven't ruled one or the other one out. So, at this time, it's being ruled accidental, but the exact cause yet has not been pinpointed. The American Red Cross is taking care of the son. He's been housed. Today at 12:45, we received several calls for a fire at Governor's Park. Employees of the Governor's Park complex were doing some plumbing and they ignited some petitions in a unit. So happens that while those buildings are completely wood frame other than the brick veneer, the fire got going up the walls where it should have met with a fire stop, it didn't. So, the fire traveled horizontally across the ceilings in two apartments. But Chief Delahanty's offices were there as well because we had probably 25, 26 people that needed to be evacuated. And he'll tell you, in the hallways, you couldn't see you in in front of your face. We brought people out, you know, as young as three months and, you know, residents that were wheelchair bound. Chief Delahanty brought in a bus from the T. We loaded them up. We brought them to the senior center. The MRC was activated. They showed up with five volunteers as well as, we have been partnering with the American Red Cross. And being a small town, when you have a problem like this, the partnerships that you forge really paid off because we had seven Red Cross volunteers. So, at 5 o'clock tonight, we had coffee and treats for the people when they first got there at 2 o'clock or so at the senior center. We fed 51 people tonight. We have electricians, locksmiths, because we had to kick in a lot of doors due to the volume of smoke and make sure everybody was out of the building. We have locksmiths, we have service master, and the employees from Governor's Park. We hope to have everybody back in the building except five impacted units where they are tonight guests of Governor's Park down at 600 Shirley Street. So, for a small town, you know, both incidents, you know, one bigger than the other, one had worse consequences than the other. I think we've, you know, the people in Winterford were served well.
Chief Delahanty, would you care to add anything?
No. As Chief Flanagan said, the partnerships you forge outside the community go as well as inside the community. I think the both departments worked very well hand in hand in a situation like that. And at some point, the smoke did get too deep and too excessive inside. I opened my offices out and let the fire pop in handle the second in the first floors where the fire was concentrated, and we certainly assisted on the third floor. So, even after the fire, we still have to maintain security perimeter there and make sure people don't want to go in, don't go in until it's declared safe by the fire department. So, I think everything went smooth and well, and we appreciate all the officers and firefighters' efforts there today.
Also, the MRC is to be commended for their work jumping immediately to task on taking care of the folks. The senior center for inviting the public in, who needed to have space to...
And I have to put a plug out for the Winterford House of Pizza. You know, we had to feed these people and we went to Nixon, the House of Pizza, and you know, I know I'll have some bills tomorrow, but a lot of it was donated and, you know, everybody, there was plenty that was left over. The winter business is also still...
Thank you, Chief.
I just would say, you know, on behalf of the whole council, thank you very much. It was a tough week and you guys did tremendous.
It's not like that firehouse had a budget.
Yeah. Never, never. Please, no, that's not... Never.
You're getting cut.
No, thank you very much, really. You guys did a tremendous job, your whole team, your staff, and I think it just really shows Winterford is best in terms of a crisis, and two crises, and all the people who joined in to help me. Everybody just deserves credit. It just makes the town look good and you help a lot of people in need. So, thank you very much.
Just to add, because I happened to be at the Ford Bank School at 1:30 and I saw the fire ridges and I went by Winter Street. I didn't go there where they were working at, but I want to commend with the Fire and Police Department on the job they were doing because I watched the duly evacuation from afar and they were outstanding in the work they were performing. And about 15, 20 minutes before the meeting started, I was down at the senior center and the MRC did an outstanding job. They are really a great asset to this community as part of our first responder team, and I want to commend Jeanie Ma, Joe, and Nancy Williams for the job they do there.
So, speaking of cuts, we're working on budgets. This past week, Mike and I have been toiling through the budget process and getting very, you know, clear minded as far as the challenge. You know, it's going to be a tough, tough budget season, to say the least. And while I appreciate, you know, the sentiments and advocacy of folks for certain departments, it'll be tough all the way around, there's no question. But we're working through it and that's really been our focus the past few days. The Center Business District improvements have been going forward. We've held two public meetings that I think have gone well and have been well attended. People have been able to ask directly our utility companies as well as our staff what to expect. I think it's been clearly articulated that, you know, March 27th will begin the process of moving forward with a very comprehensive fix down at the center, including infrastructure, utility work first, obviously, and then more to follow. It'll be probably anywhere from a year and a half to a two-year proposition, which will certainly disturb things as we know it in the center and we need to be mindful of that. I think we have a very good, as mentioned, partnership. We have a very good partnership with National Grid, who will be very sensitive to the business owners, looking to make sure that there's always a travel lane so that access will be assured in the center. They understand the rules in terms of when to work and how to work and to be mindful of the commercial interests that need to happen there every day. We will have two police details on the project and, you know, I think that Steve Cala has articulated to the public who's attended the meetings, a very fundamental, basic schedule and what's to be done. So, you know, I think that we're trying our best to be as informed as possible. We intend to hold more meetings going forward. We intend to utilize the resources of the chamber to help us communicate on a very regular basis with the affected properties so that they know what to expect every, almost on a daily basis, where the impacts will be and how to anticipate them. But this is a big effort and I think, you know, the center hasn't been touched in 30 years and no one wants to touch it again for another 30 years. So, we need to get it right and it'll be a big impact. I think as the master plan process unfolds over the next few weeks and then the council will consider a streetscape's design following that effort, which will be important to solidify so that we can then move forward with a grant application with the Commonwealth. So, we can tell them specifically, what are we doing with the money that we hope to get? And so, that's why that has to happen fairly quickly. And that's why that caused us to have to move forward quickly and get our utility work done as a first effort. So, all in all, I think we're still soliciting input from everybody. We want to know what people's concerns are. Joe Donlowitz in my office will be the point person to take that input and collate it and develop a document so that we can share that with the council, you understand what issues have come up and what remedial effort can be made to lessen the impact of this as we go forward. And, you know, continue to hold meetings and to inform people as we go. This isn't a one-meeting event. This is intended to be the beginning of a long conversation.
I know, I live in that area and there were some brochures distributed, I think every home on every street that was, is being impacted with a lot of information on there about what to expect, everything from how to identify somebody from National Grid, but there's going to be a need for every resident to actually interact with National Grid, to have their home connected to the new bike and all that. But it was explained in a brochure that they dropped off for us and that was effective.
Excellent. Excellent. Moving on, we are working to solidify partnerships with the ferry service so that we can improve our balance sheet predominantly and also ensure that the sustainability of the ferry. We are, again, continuing to discuss the potential for a service with East Boston. We're looking at the decking proposition over there and looking at how we can actually pull in some mechanics on the construction of an appropriate bow-loaded, basically, receptor that has to be built onto the pier. That's underway to be constructed. We're coming out with a schedule that should be available next week that will have every intention of launching two weeks after so that people can start to sort out their schedules and understand when to expect the ferry service. We are planning, we did get access to the aquarium and to Fan Pier. Thank you to the City of Boston for helping us to accomplish that and saving a lot of money too, by the way, because we're not having to pay the Rose War fees. That will help us to service more people. Some people want to go to the seaport, some people want to go to aquarium for different reasons. When you open up options on the waterfront, people will consider the ferry as an option for them to travel to Boston. So, we're very excited about being able to stop at both locations this year. More to come on that. I will be engaged in the development of MOUs between the City of Boston and the City of Quincy to specify obligations and expectations, and that will be happening over the next month.
So, to be clear too, that those MOUs involve receipts of revenue to support our federates?
That's correct. That's precisely right. They are, they need to contribute at the level they're contributing at in order to make this work, and they've agreed to do that. MassDOT is assisting the City of Quincy. They're going to experience some severe traffic issues with the closure of Wallaston Station. So, as a part of a mitigation package with Quincy, MassDOT is looking at the winter ferry as a way to help offset some, not certainly all, but some of that impact. So, they are willing to subsidize our ferry at a level consistent with the utilization in Quincy. And likewise, Boston is very eager to introduce, and thank you to Senator Boncori and the Speaker's office and others who have contributed to elevating a conversation about Winterford stopping at East Boston and making that a permanent stop and then going into aquarium after that, which could really open up a lot of opportunity for folks who are residing at Maverick Square area. Excuse me. So, we're exploring that. We're not sure when exactly that will happen. We have to make these stock fixes and to put some things in place before we can enable that to happen. But we're encouraged certainly by the conversations we're having with both Boston representatives and Senator Boncori's office as well as the Speaker's office to encourage the exploration of this.
Good. Counselor Boyajin?
No, I was just wondering, is that East Boston, is that kind of in the path of the way we're going anyways?
Yes, it is. We go right by there.
Yeah.
So, it's truly a question of stopping and kind of like the way a bus would stop on a bus route. It's a little more involved than that, but it's pulling in, you know, and so it takes five minutes to effectuate, but yeah. So, more to come on that and our hope is to build our budget around these opportunities and include them in as we propose the ferry budget going forward. And I've given you a few items tonight for your consideration, some work that Mike Perez has done relative to comparing our school system expenditures with schools, districts of like situation relative to Winterford. DOR has a basket of identified communities that it claims is close in nexus to Winterford in a whole host of metrics. And what Mike has done is put together a packet of analysis that helps to understand where we stand relative to other communities in terms of spending on public education. So, that was asked for and it's been delivered. So, Mike, did you want to have, add anything on that?
So, there's really just some high-level comparisons. There's only two real elements of comparison. The first few slides are really just identifying how the comparative group was established. And it's a fairly large group. There are definitely some issues with it. Some of the communities that appear in here are part of regional school districts, so the comparison isn't quite as good as it should be because I didn't filter out on any of that since I was only using the criteria from the Department of Revenue, not pulling in any data from the Department of Education, which unfortunately, the DOR has a great website that pulls in a lot of data, but they don't pull in any of the Department of Ed data. So, that's probably something that could be done in the future as far as just really identifying our comparative communities and getting the all else equals comparison.
Thank you. Counselor?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to email the presentation in a color format?
Yes.
Okay. I think some of the tables are color-coded. With regard to the ferry schedule, would it be possible to release a draft of the ferry schedule to get some public feedback on it before the schedule is finalized?
That's troublesome because we're now trying to sort of, one thing I can guarantee you, Counselor, is we're not going to make everyone happy.
Of course.
Not in Winterford, not in Quincy, not in East Boston. Everybody's going to want us to say, you know, think that we're Uber and we can pick them up when they want us to. What we're not is an Uber. What we are is more like a scheduled bus service, okay, that happens to travel along Boston's waterfront. And what we've done is worked with East Boston and worked with Quincy and with folks in Winterford. We have had some feedback from some folks who we consider part of our core user group to comment on some ideas. One, we've got some limitations. Let's be honest, we have one vote. And try to, one thing we don't want to do is push it too hard and be driving too fast and not make anyone's expectations in terms of, you know, how to be reliable. So, what we're trying to do is say, well, look, we'll try to do our best first for Winterford and then how we can fit these other two stops in reasonably. Obviously, the commuter hours are very much, you know, at issue. We felt that it's important to have our passengers leave the docks no later than or earlier than around the 7:30 hour so that they can get into work at a reasonable time. And then to try to pick our customers up after 5 o'clock sometime at both the Atlantic, I'm sorry, aquarium and seaport locations and get them home. And so, we built a schedule around that proposition first. And so, that immediately made other people upset and we expected it. But, you know, it took a lot of conversations and a lot of counseling with Quincy to accept, you know, what we're doing is meeting our needs first and then I think that they accept that. But, you know, it took a lot of conversations and a lot of counseling with Quincy to accept, you know, what we're doing is meeting our needs first, and then I think that they accept that. But then to try to go back into Boston, get folks from, say, for example, at 6 o'clock, and bring them down to Quincy, and then go back with another route back, a later route back to Winthrop later than that. So we try to do two runs into Boston in the morning for Winthrop, two runs in the evening back from Boston for Winthrop, and then sort of fill everybody else in around those blocks. It's a tricky proposition because we have to time this very carefully, and what we're going to do next week is to actually take the boat and run the route and make sure that what we're saying to people is in fact what we can deliver. So we're not there yet. It's a very, you know, challenging proposition to do what we're intending to do and not push our vessel too hard. But I, we all think that, and there were a lot of minds involved in this, that the schedule that we've come up with will be something that is achievable and reliable. What we don't want to do is to change schedules on people because to try to fit one person's likings, we did that mistake last year when we said, when we saw that one of the runs wasn't really as popular as another and then decided to cancel it. That didn't make a lot of people who took that run very happy. So we learned from our lessons to, once we set the schedule out there, let's stay with it and call it what it is, and hopefully people can build their expectations around that schedule. So that's our challenge, and it's not a group process. It's really what we know we can achieve, is my point.
I mean, I understand that it's a very complicated puzzle to put together, and certainly everybody is not going to be happy with the end result all the time. You can't make everyone happy all the time. But I do think that there is a lot of value in releasing a draft schedule and getting a little bit more, getting the input from folks in the community. My other question is, when do you anticipate a draft town budget will be available?
Probably a draft of the whole of the numbers we intend to give to the Finance Commission as a matter of our preliminary analysis the next time we meet.
On the 29th.
On the 29th, which will be just sort of more, without all of the extras, just the basic cut, first cut of where the numbers are. And I expect that there still will be gap in that because we won't have made final decisions at that point.
Just on that point too, the school case is going to vote on Monday evening with their recommendation to the town manager, and so that will be available after Monday evening.
I am very concerned about the school budget this year.
Not alone.
Yeah. We need to do whatever we can to get them, get the school committee the funding that they're requesting.
I had a very excellent meeting today with Chairman Sullivan, and I believe that there's an effort on their part, that they're very sincere and understand the gravity of the challenge, and I believe that they're working with us to try to figure out how we can, you know, close the gap as best we can and, you know, without hurting other services of the town at the same time. So I expect that we'll be working very collaboratively with them, with the school committee and the school department over the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the town manager? Okay. School department update, we had a meeting two Mondays ago, and it was really about the budget. There was a public hearing on the budget. I think Counsel Ennam was there, also Terry, somebody else was there.
Linda.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Linda Callow was there, Counsel Calla. So it was a good meeting, a lot of comments, a lot of ideas bounced around, and so it was, I thought it was a, I think it was an attempt to really try to be, you know, transparent as much as possible, let everybody try to throw out their ideas. I mean, I tried to throw out ideas about, you know, some of the limitations on the revenue side. I heard some of the discussion around using free cash, I tried to talk about that a little bit. It's a tough year, there's no doubt about it, and, but I, my feeling on it, it always has been this, it's like, it's not a, it's not a them against us at all. It's never that. I mean, sometimes it feels like that, or some people present it that way on both sides of this discussion, but it's really not. It's just all of us trying to do the best thing we can for the town, and we have limitations, absolutely. And I tried to say at the meeting the other night that, you know, the council has the ultimate responsibility for looking at it in the whole, you know, and we're not one department versus another, we're just looking at it as a whole, and we have some serious restrictions on and limitations on what we can, what we can do at this stage, but we're going to do the best we can with every department, including the school, absolutely. One thing that the school committee voted on at that meeting, just to show like the thinking going on, is we voted to approve, and this had been, we've been discussing this since we, some executive sessions of the early retirement. So we actually voted on that the other evening at our last meeting, just to put that out there in case that was an opportunity for us to figure out ways to make the budget a little bit easier to deal with. So everybody's thinking about things like that, and so we'll do the best that we can. And that was really the gist of the meeting. There were some other business-oriented things, you know, that we covered, but that was really the bulk of it. Okay, under old business, so under old business, we have, this is, there is a motion, this is regarding complete streets, and this is a motion coming out.
Coming out of subcommittee?
Coming out of the committee. I'll read the motion.
Okay.
It's to move that the town council approve and adopt the Winthrop Complete Streets policy in accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Complete Streets program, and that the town manager is authorized to accept Complete Streets Tier Two funding under the Complete Streets program for the purposes of creating a Winthrop Complete Streets plan or take any other action there too. So we heard from Counsel Verone to report on the committee.
Yes.
I don't know if this, so this is the motion, and so somebody made the motion, so we can have this discussion seconded?
Well, the motion was made coming out of committee.
Yep, so we don't need that.
So I would like to amend that motion, if I may. Under the makeup of the committee, I would like to include an appointee from the town council president as part of the makeup of the committee. So that's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So this is a motion to amend the, this is a motion, amend the motion to add the words to allow the town.
Is the policy itself part of the motion that you're asking for right now, or is that a separate motion?
I believe the policy is part of the motion.
Here's a question.
We're adopting the complete street policy.
We're adopting that policy that came before the council.
And included in that is the language.
Is accepting the money from the state.
Well, it's creating a committee to, creating a committee to oversee this program, and there's language in that policy that describes that, and I think what Counsel Verone's asking on his motion is to change that to allow the town council president to appoint a member because that's not currently in the policy.
If I may, Counselor, it has in there the town manager, his designate Public Works Director, his designate, police chief or safety officer, their designate, fire chief, health department designate, school department designate, council on aging designate. So my amendment was to have the council president able to appoint someone as well, possibly from one of the other, one of the other committees in town, or even the business community, whoever the council presidency's fit. And as an appointee, it would have to be approved by the council, so we would have some input in it.
Counsel Verone.
I don't think it's a bad idea. I'm just wondering, what would that bring the total number on the committee to? Would it be an even number?
Two.
Say two. I would, you know.
Keep it odd.
Yeah. I would say council president gets two appointees then.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be a council, is that what you're saying?
No, it could be a member of the transportation committee or a resident or whoever the council presidency's fit.
Other discussion?
So, no, and Counsel Verone and I were talking yesterday. I mean, one concern I guess I'd have would be, the transportation committee is here to advise us on that, and I don't know if there's anything that should be written into the policy of how they should be included in this or not. And I don't, you know, that was the one concern I had is to, that I think that they should be involved in this process. But I can see Counsel Verone's point that he'd like that to be at the discretion of the council president.
I think that makes sense. It would be difficult to appoint like the entire committee to that committee, and so, you know, the option left to me, I would seriously consider appointing somebody from that committee as a member of the Complete Streets committee. Another discussion?
I think the wording that there is now, saying the aforementioned committee relative to, you know, is not limited to, it may include but not limited to, so I think you could put as many appointments as you want, and I don't think you have to put it in here, but it's up to your preference.
Well, I would like to have it worded that way, and being something that we, as a policy, we could revisit in the future if it's not working, potentially if there's a need from the town manager's office or council presidency, something not working, we can discuss it and add or subtract from the policy going forward, in my opinion.
I think what he had commented yet last night was it's not a static document, it's a living document meant to be modified as we go along, I guess.
Other discussion? So on the amendment, we've got a motion, we need a second on the amendment.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Now on the main motion, to accept the Winthrop Complete Streets policy as amended, we, again, do we need a second on this?
A sec came up.
Second, so any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Good. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Verone. Under, the next section is, I think, just new business. I don't have to be up there. They're just, I'm sorry, new business. It's, you know, a couple of, my motion said I'll read under new business, and the first one is to move that the town council transfer $1,464.23 from the MWRA Inflation Fund Number 503, and $59.83 from MWRA, excuse me, Supplemental Inflation Fund Number 501, to cover the prior year deficit of $1,524.06 in the MWRA Infiltration slash Inflow Grant Fund Number 504, or take any other action there too.
I have a motion to approve it. I don't think this needs to go to subcommittee.
Mr. President?
Counsel.
I'd like to actually make the motion to waive the rule being set to the finance.
Second on that?
Second on that.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So that's the motion. That's the motion. Second motion is to move that the town council transfer $3,000 from the town council reserve number one, I'm sorry, number 0111-057-578100 to special article number 0196052-588127, pest control, to fund this article through the remainder of the fiscal year, or take any other action there too.
Motion to waive council rule and approve motion as written.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Public comment? Is there any other public comment?
Document the public.
Pardon?
The school committee, the analysis, whatever, that need public?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Michael, Mr. McCann?
Put it on the website.
We'll put it on the website or?
It needs to be in color. Put it on the website. I'll have to have a color printer print it out.
It's too expensive. I'll just read it in my hand pad.
All right.
Any other public comment? Okay, under public relations, on March 25th is a night for Kelsey, a fundraiser with the Winter Yacht Club, $35 that's coming up, and that is it. Unless any other counselor has any other?
Just wanted to mention today is World Down Syndrome Day.
Any other? Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Police chief, second. All in favor?
Second.
All in favor? We're done. Thank you.
Let's keep the clock.